Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, July 17, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for our guest speakers who join us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Coet Kibey. Are they joining us online?
No.
We will move on to Erin McElhenney-Frank. Is Erin McElhenney-Frank with us? We will move on to Chief Pomaj Chakman-Yahalahi.
Good day to all. Hope everyone is having a great day. I wanted to just talk a little bit about the climate issues that we're facing in this city and the climate issues that we'll be facing continuing to move forward as we're dealing with a climate change and a climate crisis. A lot of our people are advocates for clean air, clean water, and land, and replacing trees and native plants that were removed for construction and development. I think that it would behoove everyone to, you know, understand and maybe do a little bit of research on native plants and native species and how important they are to the ecosystem. We all enjoy living here. It's a beautiful, beautiful place that we have here. And if we want to continue to keep it thriving and inhabitable for everyone, we should consider that. FITZ Conservatory is a great institution. They do a lot with regard to green innovation and energy innovation. I am a board member of FITZ, and I know that the direction that the director there has for the vision for FITZ can translate over into city structures as well as, you know, city buildings and new development in the area. So just think a little bit about the importance of green innovation and native plants, native species. Again, my title is Chief Pomaj Chakman-Yahalahi of the Air Quap Confederacy of Aboriginal American People and the branding of my bloodline nation, the Onway Onway of Akavko Utsil Ushwe Il of Aboriginals of America. And we work with all people because we know the importance of working together for the betterment of the future. So think about native plants, native species, when we're doing planting trees in the cities and around in the communities, how important they are to our ecosystem and our environment. Thank you so much and have a great day, everybody.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Teresa Nightingale.
Good morning, esteemed members of the Pittsburgh City Council. I stand before you today as a fierce advocate for the new legislation that will protect medical cannabis patients from employment discrimination. My name is Teresa Nightingale, and I am not only the regional manager of Corporate Social Responsibility at Cresco Labs, I am also the executive director of Pittsburgh Normal. But on top of that, I am also a double cancer survivor and a medical marijuana patient myself, and have been for the last almost six years at this point. This legislation holds a deeply personal significance for me, as medical marijuana has been one of the reasons I have been able to work and thrive in my busy life, a large part of that including my career. As a mother of three, I am passionate about living in a society with rules, regulations that promote fairness and equality. The legislation we are discussing today aims to add medical cannabis cardholders to the list of protected classes in the city of Pittsburgh. This critical piece of legislation will ensure that these individuals are not unfairly excluded from employment opportunities due to the responsible and state-approved use of medical cannabis. The majority of patients participating in the Act 16 Medical Cannabis Program do so because they suffer from serious qualifying medical conditions. This is not just showing up and saying, "Oh, my back hurts. Let me smoke weed." Among these patients, we find seniors, low-income individuals, and hard-working, middle-class Pennsylvanians. For thousands of patients, doctor and pharmacist-recommended medical cannabis products serve as quality-of-life supplements, enabling them to work and navigate their days and evenings free from pain and seizures. These individuals rely on these medical cannabis products to provide for themselves and their families. It is a matter of basic human dignity that our neighbors, who are in genuine need, have access to these treatments. Denying them employment based on their medical conditions is not only unjust, but is also archaic and extremely discriminatory. Employees should not have to disclose their private medical records upfront to a potential employer and hope that they are not discriminated against just because they use medical marijuana, and then follow through without the lawsuit if they have the time and the money to do so, which most working-class Pennsylvanians don't have that privilege. This is not a new idea or premise. This is how we already treat other medications such as Xanax for anxiety or opiates for pain. When applying for a new position, I don't have to upfront tell them that I use Xanax for flying on a plane and hope that they accept that. Not to be cheesy, but it is high time our region recognizes the importance of these patients' medical treatments and eliminates discrimination based on their choice of medication. I want to take this opportunity to express my sincere gratitude to Barb Warwick and her phenomenal staff for introducing this legislation and continuously working hard to advocate for our most vulnerable neighbors. Their dedication to fighting for the rights and well-being of those who need it most is truly commendable. I urge each of you to support this vital legislation and join me in being fierce advocates for our local medical marijuana patients and community. This isn't about getting high. It's about compassion, fairness, and equal opportunities for all. Thank you for your attention, and let our people work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Julia Hilbert.
Good morning. My name is Julia Hilbert. I am a resident of the city of Pittsburgh, and of Greenfield, actually, and I'd like to also take the opportunity to thank Councilmember Barb Warwick for bringing this wonderful legislation to our attention and just for her service in general. I'm also a social worker here in the city, and I find this medical marijuana anti-discrimination legislation is very important for the more marginalized members of our community to have equal access to the medication that they deserve. As Teresa was saying, this legislation aims to add medical marijuana cardholders in Pennsylvania to the protected classes in Pittsburgh to ensure that they are not excluded from opportunities due to responsible state-approved medical cannabis use for their medical conditions. The majority of these patients do have serious medical conditions. Many are senior, low-income, and also other marginalized groups. This concerns me as a social worker, because if they are not able to have equal access to employment due to something related to their medical condition, it leans towards ableism. Thousands use medical marijuana, and they deserve to have equal employment. And if passed, this will add a lot of dignity to people who use drugs and people who are using this medication correctly. As somebody who works professionally in drug policy reform, it is my belief that everyone should be able to use cannabis. But if we are not at that point yet, it is my belief that everyone should be able to use it medically, and no one should ever lose their job for their drug use. So I ask you today to please help us pass this legislation to protect our friends and neighbors with medical conditions and allow them to work regardless of their status of medical marijuana patients in Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final registered speaker is Matthew Trickett.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here this morning. I'm also here making some comments on the anti-discrimination medical marijuana bill. A little bit about me, I am actually a transplant to Pittsburgh. I've lived here for going on nine years now. My first four years here, I worked as a social worker in the city for underprivileged and at-risk youth, and so that involved a lot of intersectionality between their background, the criminal justice system, health care, and employment. During the COVID-19 pandemic, I was able to examine really why I was in my field and what I wanted my next steps to be, and that led me to the medical marijuana industry, where I knew there was a lot of advocacy to do in those same realms that I was working in, in the social work world. And that brings me here today for you all. As my, the people who spoke before me mentioned, there's a lot of intersectionality and overlap between where medical marijuana influences people's lives, livelihoods, day-to-day life, whether that is 24 different qualified medical conditions in our state that qualify people for medical marijuana usage, and the after-effects that that has, whether they're put in a decision to try to decide between putting food on the table, providing for their family, or maybe having the medical care they need. So I'm asking that we examine this as, like I said, I'm a transplant to the state, to the city. I've grown to love Pittsburgh and a big passion and belief I have is to be the frontrunner and the leader in what we do, not only as a city, as a state, but as people leading the front for an ever-evolving industry. We're one of 38 different states that have medical marijuana in their approved legislation, so I hope that we can find a way to move forward and protect these individuals' rights and health care for equal opportunities, health care, employment, and career growth, and instead stop criminalizing them for just seeking an equitable opportunity for health care. Thank you all for this opportunity, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, Chair by myself.
Bill 644 supplemental paper, Resolution Amending Resolution 909 of 2023, which authorized the fee schedule for 2024 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code by revising the employee parking fee as recommended by the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second with discussion. Would... Yeah, would you like to make any comment here?
I was simply going to suggest that we also read Bill 89.
And withdraw that bill so that we can then better discuss 644, which I believe the one that you introduced yesterday.
Correct. So the intention is to withdraw Bill 89. They're both covering the same topic. So, Madam Clerk, would you mind reading 89 at the same time?
Bill 89, deferral paper, Resolution Amending Resolution 909 of 2023 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2024 Pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code to Reduce the Cost of Employee Parking."
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Discussion?
No, I'll save my discussion for your bill. Thank you.
So do we need a roll call vote for...
Yes.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Sharlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes, noes. Bill withdrawn.
Thank you very much. Bill will be withdrawn. That moves us back to 644, and we are at discussion on 644.
I will defer to Adam Chair, who's been working diligently with both Councilwoman Smith as well as the administration on this.
Thank you. And I will defer to the bill sponsor, or the one who's been working...
The original.
The original sponsor, so...
I want to thank you also, Councilwoman, for working through this with me. As you know, every year when the fee schedule comes up, I hold it so that the public can have an opportunity to talk about it, bring up their concerns, raise their concerns, whatever it is. And one of the concerns they had this year was the employee parking, and so we held that, we worked with everyone. And I don't know if you want to come to the table to discuss it briefly? Yeah, just brief. I don't want to be here all morning talking about it, okay?
Good morning, House Financial Officer.
Jen Gula, Finance Director, City Treasurer.
I will let Director Gula take it away, as this is her charge.
Well, it's only my charge, because that's what I'm charged to do as part of the budget.
She doesn't want to be the hated one.
I'm the keeper of the keys, basically, when it comes to the city's fee schedule and coordinate with all the other departments of budget time for them to get their schedule set and then submit it as part of the budget process for y'all to review and vote on. So, but actually, most of the work goes to Chief Cornell and Director Kellerman, who work diligently to take your views and opinions into consideration, as well as some of the things that we need to get done concerning our parking lots, and hopefully come up with a solution that you all could agree to.
Thank you. Thank you, and I do want to thank her as well for her work. Anything?
No. What I would just say is what this amendment would do would, it would decrease the fee from what is posted, right? What council had approved back in December was $97.50 for employee parking. And effective in August, this will increase it incrementally to $83.75, with the intent, you know, as Director Kellerman wants to build out the parking program next year to revisit that, to move it up. But this would give employees kind of a reprieve from the first seven months of the year, and we are thankful that we were able to have the conversations with you to work through it and take those considerations into play. With respect to employee parking specifically, I have already talked to Director Kellerman about what sort of projects she's thinking about in terms of security and cameras and things like that, and that was part of her budget request coming into the administration earlier this week. And then more generally, I've also talked to Director McDevitt about ways in which we can better inform the public and council members about proposed fee changes that will come over from Director Gula this year. You know, one idea could be, and I think we've talked about it at the table, is having those discussions at each departmental public briefing. So there's ways that we can make it more transparent for everyone.
Thank you. I do want to say that I think overall, I'm hearing a lot of complaints also about the fees for the parking, or for the park buildings, and they are getting a little bit high. I mean, when you think that we're, you know, we're trying to make sure that people are using the parks and they're paying a park tax, that we're hearing a lot of, I'm hearing a lot of complaints about the cost of those. So I really want you to, going forward, think about those and how we can make this more affordable. We want to make our parks affordable, but one of the things council members and I talked about is maybe even putting a fee, a special fee for city residents since they're paying the park tax that, you know, in addition to, you know, the other taxes that they pay. Since they're paying a special tax, maybe they can be, they can, you know, pay less and have a discount for residency.
But certainly something to consider. You know, now is the time all department directors are working with Director Gula and her team, so we will make sure Director Hornstein has these notes.
And I know there's a fee associated and costs associated with doing everything in the city of Pittsburgh, but from our area, we border the most boroughs, so I see a lot of people from the boroughs coming in and using our parks that our own residents can't even afford. So just, I just want to be mindful of that, okay? Thank you. But thank you for working on all of this. I appreciate it.
If I might add too, this is the only item that has been changed in this resolution is the employee parking.
So for the conversation going forward, I want you to know I'm going to have that conversation about the fees.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 644, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Don't go far. That moves us on to Bill 676.
Bill 676, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with the law firm of Citron Alex P.C. in connection with matters to be heard before Pennsylvania's Orphans Court at a cost not to exceed $60,000 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 676, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 677.
Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Edward William Vaughn, Jr., in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,000 over one year in full in final settlement of a claim for damage to his vehicle from a city DPW vehicle on April 22, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 677, please indicate by saying aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 678.
Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Bobby Spidey, Jr., in an Amount Not to Exceed $2,881.81 over one year in full in final settlement of a claim for damage to his parked vehicle from a city DPW vehicle on December 19, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 678, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 684, and Madam Clerk, if I could have you read, these are ARPA-related bills, I'm going to actually not have you read all of them together, because there's a proposed amendment for one of them that I see on the table. So I'll have you read Bill 684, 685, 686, 687 together.
Bill 684, Resolution Amending Resolution 578 of 2021, which authorized an American Rescue Plan Act Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Parking Authority by adding Melon Square storefront support as an additional authorized project at a cost not to exceed $1,536,398.11 for a total authorized spend not to exceed $1,616,398.11. Bill 685, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny for the completion of LED safety projects as approved in the city of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan Act allocation at a cost not to exceed $600,000. Bill 686, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2021 Capital Budget and a 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, Recreation in Senior Centers by $500,000, Reducing Step Repair and Replacement by $560,225.48, Increasing Street Resurfacing by $110,358.71, and by Increasing Facility Improvements, City Facilities by $2,132,493.97. And Bill Number 687, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2022 Capital Budget and a 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Facility Improvements, Recreation in Senior Centers by $1,629,476, Reducing Step Repair and Replacement by $1,400,000, Increasing Street Resurfacing by $132,493.77, and Decreasing Facility Improvements, City Facilities by $361,969.77."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Yes, so if we can invite those who are here to discuss these bills to the table, I believe, Deputy Mayor Pollak, Patrick Cornell, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jake Pollak, Deputy Mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
So the bills which were just read, which I believe, sorry, I just wanted, you did 684 through 687 are four out of a total of six bills that are companions to the ARPA allocation amendment that was at the table last week and held for a public hearing. The public hearing, I believe, is next week. So the, when the allocation, if the allocation amendment that is currently held for hearing were to be adopted, these make the corresponding changes to sections of various year capital budgets to put that change into effect. So these are companion pieces to that legislation.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if I had the floor. I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize.
You called for discussion, so you have the floor.
Did I? I didn't remember.
Councilwoman, yeah, absolutely.
So, and do we have to have a public hearing for all these, is what I really don't know?
That, that's, I guess, a question for the clerk or the council solicitor as to interpretation. I know that the, the amendment to the allocation plan certainly did need to be held for hearing and has been held for one. These are capital budget amendments, which we do, council routinely considers those historically without a hearing, but that's ultimately up to council to determine.
Councilwoman, if we hold these, all of the ARPA-related bills for one week, it will then align with the main reallocation bill, so that is certainly...
So you want to hold for a week?
That would be a recommendation, but I wanted to make sure that we had some time for discussion.
And we would also like some kind of brief, some kind of explanation about what's being, what's happening.
I know I still owe you the summary by district, I promise you that.
Well, I probably owe you lots of responses. I apologize for never answering.
But to, just for context, and again, we can certainly discuss it further. Last week, in discussing the, or perhaps it was the week before, in discussing the ARPA reallocation bill, there was, and it's attached to Unlegisstar, a summary table that shows the movement of ARPA funds and then the corresponding movement of bond and PEGO funds. That table is kind of a master summary of the ARPA bill as well as all of these companion bills. So taken together, there are seven pieces of legislation that achieve what's laid out in that document.
Motion to hold for one week, or do you want to have discussion further? If we're going to discuss it later, why discuss it twice? Motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor of a one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bills will be held for one week. That moves us on to Bill 688. We'll read it as a standalone.
Bill 688, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 29, 2022, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and a 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, City Facilities by $1,770,524, Increasing Facility Improvements, Recreation in Senior Centers by $370,524, Increasing Street Resurfacing by $192,373, and Increasing Remediation of Condemned Buildings by $1,307,627."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I see that we have an amendment proposed on the...
I'd like to amend the bill and then hold it as well for one week. So a motion to amend, and the bill's in front of you, and I can tell you what it does is...
We have a second on the amendment? Second? Councilwoman?
We have three streets in Elliot that are a 17 or 19% grade, depending on the street, and they are doing a lot of water line work over there, and they want to replace the cobblestone with concrete, which will give us a 50-year warranty on the streets too. And so we're just moving the money so that they can do that. That's it.
Any further discussion on the amendment? With the intention of holding for one week?
Yeah, one week.
All those in favor of amending Bill 688 with the amendment that you see in front of you, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill is amended. Further discussion?
Sorry, motion to hold one week, please.
Second.
All those in favor of a one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bill will be held.
I apologize for not talking to everybody sooner about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That moves us on to Bill, the last ARPA bill in the series, Bill 689.
Bill 689, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving a 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program and a 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, Recreation in Senior Centers by $1,992,879.64, Increasing Step Repair and Replacement by $1,960,225.48, and Increasing Street Resurfacing by $32,654." by $32,654.16.
So the recommendation here would be another one-week hold, along with the other ARPA bills?
Motion to hold one week? Do you want me to? Is it somebody else's bill? I don't know.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held one week, thank you all. Moves us on to Bill 690.
Bill 690, resolution further amending Resolution Number 768 of 2009, effective December 31st, 2009, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2010 capital budget and the 2010 community development block grant program, and approving the 2010 through 2014 capital improvement program by adjusting various line items in conformance of City Council's 2010 capital budget amendments by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code.
And Madam Clerk, if you can read that bill and all future bills up to 700.
Bill 691, resolution further amending Resolution Number 855 of 2011, effective December 29th, 2011, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2012 capital budget and a 2012 community development block grant program, and approving the 2012 through 2017 capital improvement program by adjusting various line items in conformance of City Council's 2012 capital budget amendments by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 692, resolution further amending Resolution 772 of 2012, effective January 1st, 2013, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2013 capital budget and the 2013 community development block grant program, and approving the 2013 through 2018 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 693, resolution further amending Resolution 858 of 2014, effective January 1st, 2015, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2015 capital budget and the 2015 community development block grant program, and the 2015 through 2020 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 694, resolution further amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015, effective December 18th, 2015, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2016 capital budget and the 2016 community development block grant program, and a 2016 through 2021 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 695, resolution further amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28th, 2017, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2018 capital budget and the 2018 community development block grant program, and the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 696, resolution further amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1st, 2019, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2019 capital budget and the 2019 community development block grant program, and the 2019 through 2024 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 697, resolution further amending Resolution 840 of 2019, effective January 1st, 2020, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2020 capital budget and the 2020 community development block grant program, and the 2020 through 2025 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 698, resolution further amending Resolution 647 of 2020, effective December 23rd, 2020, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2021 capital budget and the 2021 community development block grant program, and the 2021 through 2026 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill Number 699, resolution further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27th, 2022, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2023 capital budget, the 2023 community development program, and the 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. And Bill Number 700, resolution further amending Resolution 857 of 2023, effective December 27th, 2023, as amended entitled, resolution adopting and approving the 2024 capital budget, the proposed 2024 community development program, and a 2024 through 2029 capital improvement program by re-appropriating and reallocating funds closed due to the requirements of Chapter 218 of the City Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? So, these are the, these are controller close bills. The first 10 are the individual technical budget amendments, and then Bill 700 is the actual allocation, the reallocation, just to orient everyone. Is there any discussion on these bills?
I really don't have discussion. I have Peter here, if anybody wants to know why we're reallocating. This money was allocated originally, kind of just disappeared on us, so now we're just making that hole so we can move on with that project, and that's Bill Number 700.
Is there a proposed amendment? Do we need to motion to amend?
Yeah, there is, right in front of us. Councilman Cockell.
Do you wish to amend?
Yes, please, motion to amend, Bill 700.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Would you like to call? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, appreciate it. Can you explain what the amendment does?
Peter, I'd like to call Peter to the table, and the amendment, I believe, transfers money out of paving and making this project cool, and I'm not sure exactly how and why we lost the money to begin with, but that's why I called you to the table there, buddy, you know the routine.
Hi, Peter McDavid, City Council Budget Director. So, all of these overarching bills, we're changing, there's old money in capital budgets that hasn't been spent, so per City, Chapter 218 in the City Code, we have to re-author, or, can't remember the exact term, but we have to unencumber the funds and then put them back into the budget, so, most of the time, the projects are still, they have plans to move forward with them, so a lot of times, they just give them a new account number in J.D. Edwards, but there's usually a lot of leftover money in different pots that we put towards paving, because we know we can spend money on paving all the time. So, the District 4 office has been working with us because they needed $55,000 for an intersection analysis in District 4, so, the amendment will reduce the amount we're putting towards paving by $55,000 and put a line in there for the intersection analysis.
Any further discussion?
When she's done.
So, so this specific one, I see it, the amendment, I've got both the original Bill 700 in front of me, and the amendment to Bill 700, and it just strikes, so the amendment strikes out $62,000. Thank you, I've got both the amendment and the original in front of me.
Thanks.
And on the second page, I see paving struck out $62,762, and down to $7,762. Is it in the other bill where it's reallocated to?
So, at the bottom of that spreadsheet, there's an additional line.
Oh, got it, thank you. So, the old, the old one at the bottom creates the new allocation in the same amendment.
Yep.
I, to be honest, I didn't know this amendment was coming, and I similarly have a dummy-related project that, we just had the conversation this week, like, gosh, we need to do a study for Butler Street, and we don't know how much it's going to cost right now, we'll try to find out, but we don't know where the money could come from, so, I'm just giving my colleagues a heads up, it's an ongoing project that dummy was like, oh, we can't move forward until we do a little more research, so, I'm glad I asked. So, if, with your indulgence, I'm going to try to clarify that dollar amount, and between now and Tuesday, if this is the appropriate place, then I could do a written amendment on Tuesday. Thank you all.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Cale Smith, did you have a question?
I just want to thank our budget director, I know it's really challenging, I heard you cite the code, and so I just want to thank you, because I know, before we had Dan Fries, and I always say, BC.
I mean, this is something we do every year, and a lot of credit goes to OMB and the capital budget team, that they're working with departments to make sure which projects are still ongoing, even if we haven't touched the money yet, and which money can be reallocated, so.
I just want to thank you for working through this and making sure that, I know it's a different way that we're doing things now, now that we have our own council solicitor.
It's different on the side of the law, yeah.
Even for me, too, it's so different, I mean, sometimes I'm like, I should have checked with Dan Fries and all, that kind of stuff, so I do want to, I want to thank him for that, but I want to thank you as well, because I know you've worked in this area and this arena for a long time, prior to us having our own solicitor too, so, thank you for your work on that.
So we are still on the amendment for Bill 700. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Amendment, is, amendment passed, bill's amended, and now we are considering Bills 690 through 700. Any discussion on any of the other controller close bills? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 690 through 700 with 700 amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, thank you very much. That moves us on to Bill 705.
Bill 705, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct Article V Discrimination Chapter 651, Findings and Policy in Chapter 659, unlawful practices to make medical marijuana patients a protected class and restrict discrimination against them.
Motion to hold one-week brief discussion.
Second.
Yeah, so, I just, so, two things, I know that there were a number of members that got some questions about this bill, and also today, Rachel Shepherd from the Commission on Human Relations had a family emergency, so she wasn't able to be here at the meeting today, and I think it's important for her, in addition to, you know, going over the bill to talk a little bit about how the rollout would work and how, you know, and the guidance and whatnot that, that the commission can provide, right? I do just briefly want to clarify for, for members who perhaps are familiar that, you know, per the PA state code, right, it, there are some exceptions to, which include, if you're, for the most part, if you require a CDL, commercial driver's license, or carry a firearm at work, so those are exceptions in the Pennsylvania law, and in this bill, we also added some conditions that will allow for employers to test for cause, so if there's someone who appears intoxicated at work, and also to test in the case of a workplace accident, and then also to explicitly say that an employer is not required to allow use of medical marijuana at the workplace, so, I just wanted to clarify those exceptions, but otherwise, yeah, the purpose of this bill is to, to end employment discrimination against medical marijuana patients, so.
Thank you, that Cockell, we can bring our hookah to work.
No, you can't, it says you can't. Any further discussion before a proposed one-week hold? Councilman Cockell.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you, Councilman Warwick, for, you know, agreeing to hold this for a week. Out of an abundance of caution, I spoke to Greg Bernarding, that, you know, head of the Building Trades, anytime we talk about their hiring practices, it just raises a red flag automatically, you know, they pride themselves, our, our labor unions are the safest workers on the planet, they really are, they take that, that is the highest of priorities. And speaking to Mr. Bernarding yesterday, he had not yet seen the legislation, so they had questions. I don't think they questioned the spirit of the bill, and I don't know if there's going to be anything to it, but they wanted a little additional time for their attorney to, you know, kind of dissect it, look through it, and to see if there are any complications to their hiring practices. I don't know if there will be or not, but, you know, we appreciate the extra week to at least look into it, so, thanks.
Any further discussion? Did you make a motion for a one-week hold? I can't recall.
Did I? I think I did.
Okay.
Motion to hold one week.
Second, all those in favor of a one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for one week, thank you very much. That moves us on to invoices. Do I have a motion for invoices?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to, moves us on to P cards. Do you have a motion for P cards?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I will note that we had one PayPal charge from OMB, we have the invoice in hand, and this was a payment to the Pennsylvania Purchasing Association for annual membership fees for the procurement team. All those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Two noes. P cards are approved, thank you very much. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Cockell.
Bill 661, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the U.S. Marshals Service in an amount not to exceed $17,806 to return seized funds in accordance with cases filed in the United States District Court, Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 661, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill 679, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in the amount of $16,500 to work related to the Windsor Carnahan Reconstruction Project.
Motion to hold one week, at the request of Delby, the numbers might change on this one, so.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of a one-week hold on 679, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held one week. That moves us on to 682.
Bill 682, resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for the Robert E. Williams Park Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $250,000 with a local match of $37,500 for a total grant project cost of $287,500 for this stated purpose.
Oh, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 682, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 706.
Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 173 of the Pittsburgh City Code, the naming of Room 458 in the City-County Building to the Tim McNulty Press Room.
I'm sorry, motion for a public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Bill being held for a public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held. Thank you very much. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Charlin.
Bill 660, resolution providing for an agreement with Just Mediation Pittsburgh to provide information about the Commission on Human Relations' work and fair housing laws to the landlords and tenants. They seek for mediation at a cost not to exceed $30,000 initially, and the option to renew for one additional year, with a maximum total not to exceed $60,000 over two years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 660, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill 701, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article V, Section 91102 Use Table, Section 91104 Use Standards, by changing use types and review procedures regarding residential uses in residential districts in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to send the Planning Commission for a report and recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of sending the bill to Planning Commission for a report and recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be sent to Planning Commission. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Cale Smith.
Bill 675, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with Key's Service Corps for the 2024 and 2025 AmeriCorps Summer Program. Said agreement or agreements involves the matching of funds and shall be at a total cost not to exceed...
cost not to exceed $40,000 over a two-year period.
Do we have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 675, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 662, Resolution Amending Resolution 844 of 2023, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an amended agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Cohen Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for renegotiation of the city's cable franchise agreements with Comcast and Verizon, and for consultation on development of fiber and wireless telecommution, telecommunications assets and policy by increasing the approved amount by $60,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $711,213.70.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 662, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 663.
Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Information Age Technologies, Inc., for the co-pilot annual subscription fee for the Healthy Act of Living Senior Centers software subscription used for data collection and the reporting of services to Allegheny County Department of Human Services Area A- Agency on Aging as mandated by the city's contract with Allegheny County for a three-year term. The total amount for 2024 will be at a cost not to exceed $21,000 with future annual amounts to be negotiated on an as-needed basis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 663, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill 664, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works and the Director of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a permanent easement agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to Maintain, Operate, Repair, Inspect, Repair, Remove and/or Abandon an Existing Public Water Facility, and a Temporary Easement Agreement to Perform All Work Necessary to Complete the Project Located on City-Owned Property at a cost not, at a cost, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 664, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 665.
Bill 665, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 27B, Lot 199, Zero Anaheim Street, Council District No. 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 665, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 666.
Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Property in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 25S, Lot 238, Zero Martha Suller Street, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 666, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 667.
Bill 667, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Third Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 9M, Lots 99A and 100, Zero Cliff Street, Council District Number 6, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 667, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 668.
Bill 668, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 10D, Lots 51, 58A and 59, 2702, 2724 and 2726 Bedford Avenue, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 668, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 669.
Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Property in the 27th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 75L, Lot 121, 1611 Antrim Street, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 669, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 670.
Bill 670, Resolution Amending Resolution 297 of 2022, effective June 14, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the 12th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 124N, Lots 281, 282, 283, and Block 125B, Lots 281 and 283, Meadow Street and Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number 9, by Removing Porcel's Block 125B, Lots 281 and 283, Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number 9, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 670, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 671.
Resolution Repealing Resolution 619 of 2021, effective September 30 of 2021, authorizing a U.R.A. of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 27B, Lots 392 and 393, 826 and 828 Shawnee Street, Council District Number 6, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 671, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 672.
Resolution Repealing Resolution 620 of 2021, effective September 30 of 2021, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the 18th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 15R, Lots 230 and 281, 844 Gearing Avenue and 814 Delmont Avenue, Council District Number 3, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 672, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 673.
Resolution Repealing Resolutions 368 of 2023, effective June 10, 2023, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 26P, Lot 164, Council District Number 6, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 673, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 674.
Bill 674, Resolution Repealing Resolution 182 of 2021, effective March 18, 2021, authorizing the U.R.A. of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title and Interests, if any, in, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 26P, Lots 156 and 157, located on the south side of Adelaide Street, east of Wichita Way, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 674, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our Standing Committee's agenda, and we will move on to announcements momentarily. Meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 PM, Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda relative to the Controller's report on procurement waivers. Next week, Council will hold their regular and Standing Committees' meeting on Tuesday, July 23rd, and Wednesday, July 24th, at 10:00 AM respectively. Registration ends at 9:00 AM the morning of each meeting. To register to speak at these Council meetings, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the Council Meeting webpage. You may also register by calling the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138. Anything from members? Councilwoman Cale Smith?
I just wanna thank the U.R.A. for attending a meeting with me yesterday. You'll be happy, David, I'm saying something nice, but, for attending a meeting with us yesterday, um, at Marion Manor in Banksville. There's a lot going on with our senior housing in the City of Pittsburgh. As you know, Councilwoman Gross is going through some things in her side of town, I think it might be in your, your district as well, Councilman Gohari Mosley, and, um, and in our district. And some of the things we found out were related to, uh, Medicare and Medicaid and how they're paying, uh, or not paying the way that they did, and Marion Manor broke down their numbers for us, and they were, like, actually losing $20 every minute, every single day, uh, for every year that they remained open. So, um, they really have done a lot to keep that place open, but I do wanna say that I, I was happy that I reached out to, um, Congressman, Congresswoman Summer Lee's office, and, um, I believe that they're gonna be looking into some of the things that, that need to be addressed. But it's an issue across this country, and I think that we really start, need to start having some conversations publicly about what exactly Medicare is or is not paying for any, any longer, and, um, just so the public is aware. So, I think, um, I'm not gonna do it today, I'm gonna wait until I see what, you know, they would like us to do, but I'll probably call for a post-agenda at some point to discuss that. But I will say that Marion Manor at this point is working with us, um, the reports that they saw in the paper, the county made it clear that there will be nothing happening in our side of town, um, and, or any of us, they wanna work with the council people in those, in those areas, so I wanna thank them as well for, um, for working with us. So, I just wanna say, uh, on every level of government, people, this is what should be happening, people working together for the betterment of the people that we serve. So, I wanna thank them all for their work together.
Thank you very much. Anything else from members? Councilman Mosley?
Uh, I just wanna, uh, thank Councilwoman, uh, Cale Smith, uh, you know, for your remarks and, and bringing up, you know, a really important issue, uh, it's an issue that we've been dealing with, um, in District 9, in particular, the Homewood House, which has gotten, um, a lot of, uh, of media attention, and, and for good reason, because of the conditions, um, you know, as well as the issues that we're dealing with, um, and working with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and ensuring, um, that they're, uh, enforcing, you know, the regulations of the, uh, private building owners that, you know, make money and are supposed to be, you know, ensuring that, you know, our city, senior citizens are living with dignity, you know, and safety during their golden years. So, it is an issue I look forward to working with, Councilwoman Cale Smith, um, on this issue, because, um, it's not just, um, in District 2 and District 9, but it truly is a, is a, is a national issue, but, but also, um, a citywide issue, and I think it's, uh, incumbent upon all of us as, as, as local leaders to fight to make sure that our senior citizens are living with dignity.
Can I just say something back to that real quickly? What's my understanding that, um, what's happening is more of the market is becoming private and more costly, because these nonprofits like, you know, the, the Diocese and others can no longer sustain the effort, their efforts, and so at some point, this is really, you know, we're talking about the homeless population, at some point, we may be looking at a lot of our seniors, and so I'm hoping that we get in front of this, you know, now, but we need our federal leaders to work with us as well, so I'm, I'm grateful that everyone's working together.
Thank you both. Anything else from members?
I, I wanted to add to that, I, you know, I know that there's, uh, I know that we're talking right now specifically about aging residents and, uh, aging residents and, um, and, and housing, but I think it might be worthwhile for us to consider either, yeah, you, you talked about a hearing, a post-agenda, I recently had a session with the Area Agency on Aging in the county, and, um, some of these senior center directors from around the county, and, you know, I, I just don't think the City of Pittsburgh is ready for our aging population that's gonna be, you know, really coming our way, coming our way in big numbers in the next 10 years.
Or sitting here at the table.
We haven't, we haven't really, we don't really have a plan for addressing all the multitude of issues, housing, you know, um, health, recreation, you know, access to services, so maybe we can put our heads together and consider, you know, a series of, of public hearings or of, of posted and hearings to cover all those bases.